So as our school board chair just mentioned, we are here for our annual truth and taxation hearing for taxes payable in 2025. I'm Angie Manuel and I'm the Director of Business Services. So I'll just have you keep going, Stephanie. Thank you. So this public meeting must occur between November 25th and December 30th and at 6:00 PM or later. May be part of a regular scheduled meeting where we have the meeting before a regular school board meeting. But basically, we discuss the current year budget and the proposed property tax levy. And then we must allow time at the end for public comment. So our agenda will be first I'll talk about background on school funding and then I'll talk about the district's budget and it would be the current year budget. And then our proposed tax levy for taxes payable in 2025, the next calendar year. And then at the end, we'll allow time for public comment. So with that, we'll dig right into the background on school funding. And just a reminder, I know our school board members are aware of this, but for members of the public, the Minnesota Legislature does set the funding for Minnesota Public Schools. It's in the Constitution. And as you can see underlying there, the legislature makes the provisions by taxation and otherwise. And as a result of that, the state sets really all the formulas which determine revenue for school districts. Most revenue is based on a specified amount per pupil such as general education aid. The state sets tax policy for schools and the state also sets the maximum authorized property tax levy. Districts can levy less, but not more than the amount authorized by the state. So basically what the school board approved in September, the levy can't go up unless we would have had a successful referendum, which as we know, we didn't. So the levy can only go down at this point. The state also authorized the school boards to submit referendums for operating in capital needs to voters for approval, which we had done in November, as you all know. All right, so just background on the general education formula allowance. And I know school board members, you hear me talk about this all the time, that the general education formula has not kept pace with inflation. We got an increase last year in 2324 of 4%. For 2425, we have an increase of 2%. And so that last paragraph up there states that if it would have kept up with inflation, the formula allowance would be $8,645 versus $7,281. I kind of ran some numbers this afternoon, just, you know, how much is that dollar wise? And if we would be getting the $8,645, we'd be getting an additional $4.7 million in state aid from the state. So that tells you how much lacking. Four millions, well, 4.7 million, let's just say that. Yeah, yeah. And as a result of that, that's why districts have to have operating levy referendums. And again, did a little bit of analysis, there's something called local optional revenue, which is 724 per pupil that every district automatically gets. And then with our current operating referendum, that's what makes up the gap. And like I said, we wouldn't need that referendum if the formula would have kept pace with inflation. The additional piece that you hear me talk a lot about is the underfunding of special education. And we did get some improvement in 2425 because the state did put, I call some more money on the special education cross subsidy formula. Prior years, the districts were only getting 6% of the difference between special education costs and special education revenue. That percent did go up to 44%. And so the district did get some well-needed help with that. And for Big Lake, that difference is about additional $2 million. That did come in, that will be coming in now here in 2425. So again, you know, some good improvements there when it comes to our budget. So then to just, to dig deeper into the budget, we have several different funds. The main one is our general fund. That's the main operating, operational fund of the district. And then we have food service, community service. We have a building construction fund because as you know, we're still doing construction projects. And so then that fund accounts for those costs. Our debt service fund is what I call our mortgage payments. And then we also have an OPEB or other post-employment benefit trust, which accumulates, which has accumulated bond proceeds and investment revenue from OPEB bonds several years ago. And then we use that to pay other post-employment benefits. Okay, now the next slide is this is a publication of revenue, an expenditure publication. So it has last year's data, actual data, and then this year's budget. This was required to be published in the West Sherburne Tribune, which I think it was the Saturday of Thanksgiving it was published. And just want to make one comment about this. You can see, if you can see those numbers, I know they're kind of small. You see a decrease in 2425 and a lot of that, because this is, excuse me, there was some money we received in 2324. An example would be that insurance claim from the hail damage claim of July 23. We got the money in, but the project is going to occur this year in 2425. So you see, you see, excuse me, you see balances going down, but that's the main reason. The biggest, one of the biggest is that hail claim, construction project. And then we have some capital projects that we just thought we would do last year, but actually we're going to be doing this year. So that's why you see a decrease overall from last year to this year. And with that, I have some graphs on the following pages, just kind of, it's kind of sometimes easier to understand the budget when you see it graphically. And so this is a pie chart graph of all the funds of the district. And as you can see, the general fund, again, which is the operational fund of the district, does comprise the majority of the total district revenue budget. And on the next page, we have the components of the general fund revenue. And here's what I wanted to point out, what is different than in the past. Well, what hasn't changed is the state, I mean, almost 80% of the district's general fund revenue, that federal portion has gone way down because all the COVID funding from the pandemic has expired, or in other words, the district has spent all the funds allotted to them. So that percent, I don't know if I, if I remember right, it was like 5%, 6%. It's gone down to 1%, 1.9%. Because really, all we have left are, we have a technology grant and then our title grants is in that federal dollar component. The local dollars, that includes the property tax levy. And then, like I said, the state, and the majority of that state portion is again, our general education aid and special education aid. And then there's some smaller aid categories, but those are the two largest components. Okay, we talked about revenues, so we'll talk about expenditures. And so this is, this graph is what I call expenditures by object, or in other words, how we are spending them. And then as you know, we, you know, I always say we're a service-oriented school. And so most of our expenditures are going to be in salaries and wages and benefits. Those two, those are the two largest pieces of the pie. And those two together make up 73.6% of our budget. Normally, that's around 80%. But again, when I talked about those capital projects, the capital expenditures piece of the pie, that's almost that 7.9 or almost 8%. That is normally about 1% to 2%. So because we are budgeting for so much capital projects, it's kind of skewing a little bit of what our salaries and benefits budget is. But like I said, salaries and benefits is typically 78 to 80% of the district's general fund budget. And then on the next slide, this is then by programs. So how are we spending it on different programs within the district? And if you add up what's called regular instruction, vocational, educational instruction, special ed instruction, instructional support services, and then pupil support services, pupil support services, the largest component is transportation, all of those categories is 80% of the district's budget. And I just wanted to mention two sites and buildings, again, because of those capital projects, that's a larger slice of the pie than normal. But 80% of the budget is going to what I call instructional or instructional support services for the district. Okay, so we talked about background on school funding and then we talked about our budget. So now we're going to get into the levy and how a school district's levy works. And so one of the key components is unlike cities, counties, townships, the change in the tax levy does not determine the change in the budget. So this tax levy that the school board will approve tonight is actually going to be for 2526. And we said, we are, the school board will set that budget, approve that budget in June. So again, like I mentioned before, it's determined by state formulas. Some increases in tax levies are revenue neutral. And for those school board members that have been on the board for a long time, you'll remember that's the equal, I call it the equalization issue, where you have revenue, so much is local, so much is state, getting to the point now where we just don't get a lot of equalization aid from the state. It's mainly tax levies. And again, expenditure budget is limited by these formulas. And then, as I mentioned, increase in school taxes does not always correlate to an increase in the budget. And that, I think I touched on this a little bit, school district, our budget year begins July, or July 1st to June 30th. Cities and counties, and I would say townships as well, budget year begins January 1st and they're January 1st to December 31st. Their taxes, the 25, pay 25 taxes do determine or provide revenue for their budget in '25. As I mentioned, this levy will provide revenue for '25, '26. Okay, this next slide, this is what I call the annual truth and taxation notice. And I just want to point out that there's the school portion. So the school portion is just one part. And then there's a city or township, depending on where you live, and then there's the county. And then sometimes there's some like other local taxing jurisdictions. But just want to point out that the school district only has one, I call one piece of the pie of your total tax bill. Okay, the next slide, just what I want to mention here is then, so getting back again to the levy, there's like two components of a school district's levy. They're either set by state law, and these are these formulas that I keep talking about, or voter approval. And your voter approval is like your bond referendums or operating levy referendums. Okay, so then in the process, so there's like a six-step process. And step five is the one only where the school board, I say has control, I guess for lack of a better word, where the school board sets the levy. And as I mentioned, it's only one step in the process. But it starts with the assessor determining market value, legislature sets formulas, the county auditor calculates tax capacity for each parcel, then the MDE calculates the levy limits, school board sets the levy, and then the county auditor divides the levy by each parcel to determine property taxes for each commercial or residential property. So this year's process, we start with September 8th, but it actually starts in the summer because that's when I'm required to input some data into the state's, what we call levy system. But then on September 8th, MDE does prepare a draft for us to review. On September 2026, the school board approved that proposed levy. In mid-November, you all should have received, those of you that are Big Lake residents, you should have received that proposed property tax statement. Tonight is the public hearing, and then following this hearing, the school board will certify the final levy during the regular board meeting. Okay, now we'll dig into kind of a little bit more detail with the levy, proposed levy. It actually is going down, which is good news, by 232,020 or 1.7%. And then the next slides, we'll talk about some of the reasons for, the reasons actually increasing and decreasing the different components. This is a snapshot of the total levy and you can see right at the bottom there under the total, the 1.7% decrease. And again, on the next slides, we'll talk a little bit about some of the reasons for the changes. The first one, this is probably the biggest one. So under the general fund, we had a general fund increase in LTFM. You can see it under the change category there. But then we had a decrease in the debt service fund. This is where we, like we talked about during our referendum campaign, we had, one of our mortgages is paid off or is going to be paid off. But then under LTFM, we have a health and safety project, high school dehuman, I can't say that, thank you, that we will be doing in '25, '26. So that's the, the two almost offset each other, but actually, when you net the two, there is a decrease. Let's see, yeah, LTFM is based on a per pupil formula. Yeah, so district is funding through combination of general fund revenue proceeds from a bond issue. And then, yeah, and so basically, in that third bullet point, this is something I know that school board members are well aware of, but we like to maintain those consistent tax rates. Okay, one, this is a decrease and this falls under the category of prior year adjustments. And the reason we have these prior year adjustments is we are putting in estimate, enrollment estimates for a levy that's two years later. And so there is changes in enrollment, because I don't have the crystal ball of what enrollment will be, but we do our best guess, we have an enrollment projection model. And so what had happened last year with last year's levy, we actually had an, we had a big adjustment because our enrollment was actually too low. And then the state, what it does, what I call where it trues it up, you know, so then we get the, we get the actual revenue. Well, we didn't have that large adjustment this year in the pay 25 levy. That's the reason for the decrease. And one last big component, reason of our levy change, this is in the community service fund in our school age care program. We are allowed to levy to reimburse for special education costs for, so let me rephrase that, for extra staff needed to service special education students in the school age care program. So yeah, reason for change is just increased costs of providing those services for students with disabilities, and we are allowed a local levy for that. And that's an increase of $89,000. Okay, so now we'll talk, kind of get a little bit nitty gritty here again regarding the levies. So kind of what goes into our tax bill, like how is it calculated? Here's the reasons, you change in the value of the property, changes the value of all property within the district, and then increase or decreases in levy amounts. And so we have some charts and graphs, actually, I think I'm getting ahead of myself. Keep going, Stephanie. So to explain the impact of property valuations, we have a little example here of where we have two homes valued at $100,000. The orange, I think, can we see that? Yeah, orange and then blue. Each, we have a total levy of $500, each will pay 250. And then if you go on to the next slide, then, but of these two properties, the orange house increased by 10% the value, the blue house value increased by 25%. So that's where you can see the change, the impact of the valuation. The blue house is going to pay more than the orange house. So that's just a real simple explanation of how property valuations impacts an individual's property tax bill. Okay, and then just we included one slide here, just there was some legislative, or one legislative change for pay 25. And this change actually benefits homeowners where it helps with their property tax burden. There's something called a homestead exclusion, and so they increase that exclusion. So what that means is like your, say your value is 100,000, but say if the exclusion was 50,000, just I'm using a very simple example, they've increased that exclusion. So then your value, it helps with that value, if that makes sense. And then there is a limit for ag homestead land, so this mainly affects agricultural property. But again, key point here is it just helps the tax burden for property tax owners. Okay, now here in the next few slides, we have some charts that shows school district taxes only, that's why I want to emphasize, school district taxes only. First, a few examples are going to be on no change in valuation. So there you can see basically what the levy has done without factoring in that property valuation. And then the last slide will show a 28.5% increase in property value over the past four years. That's a pretty real number, because if you recall, values were really, really increasing the last few years. They have stabilized, or at least the information I have, it's somewhat stabilized, but that's why that percent is very, very high. The amounts for '25, again, they're preliminary estimates, and then your final amounts could change slightly. But and these estimates were prepared by elders. So with that, Stephanie, I'll have you go on to the next slide. So this is an, actually, can you go on to the next slide? I like the graph better. So this is an example of a $350,000 property and a $400,000 residential property. And you can see since 2022, the school tax portion has actually decreased, again, assuming no change in valuation. You can see that drop for both the $350,000 and $400,000 property. And then if you keep going, Stephanie, I think I got an example. Oh, yeah, yeah, right. And then we have two examples here, one of a commercial property and then an apartment. And again, you same, same result there, that taxes have actually decreased. And then this is, these are the two charts I talked about, that, okay, once you factor in the property value increases, you can see slight increases, once you factor in that property value change, increases in '23 and '24, and then you see that slight decrease in '25. And this is a $350,000 and $400,000 example again. Okay, all that being said, we did want to conclude with talking about that there are some programs through the state that homeowners can apply for. Two, actually, two refunds and a deferral, and again, is to help with the property tax burden. What I always say, we outline this for you, but I also say that if you think you qualify, contact your tax advisor. But just to point out that there are some programs that could help homeowners out with their property taxes, possibly get some refunds. And then the senior citizen, there's a property tax deferral program. Okay, so at this point, we can accept, or the school board will accept any public comments. And then again, as I mentioned, during the regular board meeting, the board will certify that 2025 property tax levy. So I'll turn it over to Tanya.
Okay, we will open it up for public comments. If anyone has any public comments. Any questions? There's no comments or questions? Thank you, Angie.
All right.
I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Second by Tony. Any other questions? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Uh, we're gonna call the regular board meeting for December nineteenth to order, so that all board members are present. First, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion made by Nelson. Second by Scales, any other discussion? All in favor? I oppose, motion carries. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here's your pretty.
Oh, very nice.
Uh, tonight, we have one retirement recognition. Tony is leaving our board, twelve years of service. I've really enjoyed getting to know you and work with you. I like that analytical side, because that's always the side I always look at. So, we will make sure Angie keeps all those graphs in there for us, because we know that those were the things that you really wanted way back when, so. And I enjoyed all of our conversations and seeing that other other viewpoint inside of things. Even though you were sometimes on like a mountaintop or out in San Francisco or somewhere. And I was stuck here in Minnesota, so. But, and I really have gotten, it's really great to know you and work with you these last ten years.
I've enjoyed working with all of you. It's just been an outstanding experience. I'll, I'll, I'm gonna save my comments to the very end of the meeting, if that's okay?
Yep, that would be just fine.
Nice things to say about all of you and all of you. Nothing bad.
You're not roasting any of us? Well, I will bring your mug over to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, though.
Do you need a picture?
Can I do a picture?
Yeah, you wanna stand over there? We can either stand here. We'll stand in front.
There you go.
Okay. On to open forum, which I don't think we have anything ready for open forum. Uh, on to the consent agenda, the previous minutes from the November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four regular board meeting claims and accounts the amount of nine hundred sixty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars and fourteen cents, the credit card report and the personnel report. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second by Sixberry, any other discussion? All in favor? I oppose, motion carries. On to donations. I will make a motion to approve the donations. Second, welcome to get to Scales, second by Scales. Any other discussions? All in favor? I oppose, motion carries. Financial report, Angie.
Okay, Tony, you get to listen to one last financial report. All right, so we'll talk about enrollment. And, uh, so, um, because we've been doing fall MARS submissions, we, I have some revised counts for you. They didn't fluctuate by much, but, um, like I said, fine tuning those counts. So I got the revised numbers there, and we'll see graphically on the next page. But we did see a slight decrease from November to December, but we're still five, um, ADMs or average daily membership over our revised budget, which I talked about last month. So, this is the wonderful graph that I think Tony actually might have developed at one point. Yes, yes, I think we worked on it together. Yeah, yeah, so, so we always want that orange line above that yellow line, um, which it is. But, you know what I found interesting is the current, let's see, I was looking at current year versus prior years. And and how it's just, it's it's just been so different. And it used to be that after, um, winter break, we would see a decrease. Well, we, it seems like now we're seeing a decrease now, and then we see an increase. So it's just been kind of an interesting, um, trend, and I think a lot of it might have to do with online. That's my theory, but we'll see what happens in January, so.
So you know what, before this graph? We never could make that commentary.
Right.
It was just a bunch of numbers.
Yeah, it was.
There's no story that went with it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I remember, I honestly remember sitting in the audience and it was like, what did they just say? And usually I can catch on, but.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so I, I mean, uh, there's really nothing more to say about enrollment. I mean, again, the slight decrease, but but we've had increases, but then, or sorry, we've had decreases, but then they're offset by increases, so. Yeah, it's not 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 a big change. Um, just one budget revision that I think I told you last month, I wasn't gonna do anymore for a while, but because I presented a a bunch last month. But, um, we actually met with our copier rep and, um, that we, that they have what's called state contract pricing, so we know it's the best price you can get. And because the prices, um, were actually very favorable, um, we decided to, um, up upgrade or up update, upgrade two additional copiers than what I had budgeted. So I just had to increase that budget. Does not affect the unassigned fund balance, we have an assigned fund balance for copiers to, basically helps me budget for our copier replacements. We usually buy instead of leasing, because leasing is more expensive, so. So that's the only budget revision. So this looks the same pretty much from last month, other than the assigned fund balance just went down by that forty-three thousand, so. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention tonight, because we talked about compensatory revenue, um, last month. So I did have a chance to take a further look at that formula change and an estimate for Big Lake for next year. So it's not as bad as other districts, um, but I am forecasting under current formula. And I say that because we know it's a budget year. But it it will drop about a hundred and fifty thousand for Big Lake. I have to be honest with you, when I finally came to the number, I was actually relieved. Because, I mean, like I mentioned last month, there's a lot of districts that are in a lot worse shape. What I, the latest, I just got an email, um, I think it was earlier this week from MDE. What they are doing now is the final fall MARS submission is early January. Once that final submission, and they have all the final numbers for free and reduced direct certification counts, that's the new formula, because it's just based on that. Then what they have to do is they have to take that number then, and and so they look at a statewide number. They have to make sure they're meeting the minimum spend requirement in law right now. So how it was explained to me is that, so I have our estimate based on our counts. It could go up slightly if they've not met that minimum spend. But again, I'm gonna say it's a budget year, so it could change. But I just at least wanted to update the board. It's not as bad. I I honestly, I was really scared that it was gonna be really bad, but but it it it, I mean, I mean, we don't want revenue to go down, but it's it's not going down by as much as I had anticipated, I guess. So, and stay tuned, you know, we have a legislative session coming up, so. It may change. So that's all I have for tonight, so I just need you to approve the financial report and then that one budget revision.
Okay, motion made by Scales. Second by Brown, any other discussion? All in favor? I oppose, motion carries.
Okay, um, so, yeah, just to follow up on, um, the truth in taxation hearing, I am just recommending that the school board approve the pay twenty twenty-five levy. If I could get the exact amount, I'm getting it in front of me here, of thirteen million, or yes, thirteen million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and forty-three cents.
Do we need another motion?
We'll tie ground.
Second.
Second by Scales, any other discussion?
No, no, it does have to be real call.
All in favor? I oppose, motion carries. Well, hello, everybody, it is our time of year in December, and legislation, we come and, um, do the old world's best workforce, now called comprehensive achievement and civic readiness, as in statute, and so it changed in twenty twenty-four. The changes, um, are a lot of the same of the world's best workforce, except if you remember, they removed the read well by third grade, put it into the Read Act, and, um, instead included the all students prepar- prepared for lifelong learning. More information is supposed to come out November of twenty twenty-four, as soon as I get it, I'll let you know. Um, no, they they've kind of given us a little like, yes, what you're doing is good, keep going with that, so that's what we're doing. So, um, I'm going to quickly go through this, it doesn't change much, and as I said to our district curriculum advisory committee, it's kind of weird, because in statute, we have to come in December and present this. It's really the exact same thing I presented to you in September, because nowadays, we have information a lot sooner than we used to. And so you you really have all seen this before. So our early childhood, we have the two goals, we have literacy and we have behavior, we're only required to have one goal, but I do still report to MDE on both of them. We did meet in both, so there was the literacy, there is the behavior, and we keep that goal the same, because it's exactly what MDE is looking for. And so, um, and we are gonna keep both the literacy and the behavior goals. We also talk about strategies that we're going to implement or continue in order to make sure that we're doing well with our early childhood. And I do want to call your attention, one thing that we are prioritizing is that participating in that ECK twelve, and we're really having an EC to twenty-two framework that we're really working hard to bridge. And then the second goal is our racial and economic achievement gaps between students, and this is one that MDE dictates that we report on. And so they also give us our groups that we need to segregate, to segregate our data by. We did notice that special education was removed from the statute. And so, but since I have it, and since I did this report before that, I'm gonna continue to report on it. But you might not see it. So here is it laid out in the big number form. But we have already decided that we all like graphs better, so here it is in graph form. And so in graph form, really what we're looking for is for everything to be straight line. We want, and we don't want all students to go lower to get that, we want all students to raise up to get that. And so, um, we've had some robust conversation, both at the district level and at the district curriculum advisory level about what are we doing to do this? So here's math, or here's reading and math, and then science. And I do want to take this opportunity to just let the board know that our science MCAs are changing this spring to a new version. So MCA fours, um, in science and the alt-science, remember, we used to have the MTSS for our most highly needing special ed students. We now have the alt-MCA's. And so that will be a new version that comes out this spring, so we will no longer be able to compare test scores. Next year, the ELA reading scores change, so then that will take away our ability to do that longitudinal look, so. Um, but those are our reading, um, math and science, and as you can see, we still have discrepancies and disparities, and we are, we have, we have said that our MTSS framework, and that's kind of our, what we're leaning into and making sure that we have that intentional systemic curriculum with fidelity, and our principals spoke very eloquently about it's not just the what, but it's also the how. And so putting those together, we're really hoping to see some big shifts in these graphs. And so I'm, I'm hoping, Tony, you'll stop back someday for the September, I'm hoping they also move this to September, and you will see some really nice high flat bars, so stay tuned. This is one that just kind of gives it all together, so this is kind of the one that I am hoping to see the most change in, because it just really shows it all in one spot. And there's bigger conversation around this too, like that two or more races, like what is that really? Yeah, so, so our goal still is, this is given to us from the state that would close those economic gaps. I left special education on here, although, like I said, I can't promise you that I'll, you'll see that next year, so. Things that we're doing, you can see that we're we're on our our summer time when we get together and look at data, we've gotten a lot better at digging into the data and disgregating it by all these groups and all of the different systems that we use data for. Our better understanding of our learner variability, we're getting, um, our students are looking different, and so we're trying to take a proactive approach to how do we best address the needs of those students. Our UDL, we continue to be better at our teaching practice and instruction, and how how can we look, how can we do better in our classrooms to do all that different variability in our students? The social emotional practices, we kind of talked about those soft skills that are so important for our students, especially those four C strategies that we bring out in STEM. And then just really prioritizing those grade level standards, those life work skills and literacy. Math is coming up, in fact, I'm being pushed to do it next year, so that math and literacy will be on here. Our next one is our students' ready for college and career readiness. We use our personalized learning plans for this goal, that's one of the options that we can use. And so, um, we want ninety percent of our ninth and tenth graders to complete that, and not, when we say completed, it really means that they're using it, they're not just putting it on a shelf, it's really something that they come back to frequently. So we had eighty-nine percent of our ninth graders, ninety-three percent of our tenth graders, so technically, when I report this to the state, it will be goal not achieved. I think it's close, so I'm calling it a win. Um, I did get to see one of our classrooms, um, I did get to go and observe one of our classrooms actually working on this and having the conversations. And I was quite impressed with the robust conversations, um, watching ninth and tenth graders really having good vocabulary about what their lives are gonna look like someday and how they're gonna use these skills. That was a really neat process to watch. So again, ninety percent of our ninth and tenth graders for spring of twenty twenty-five. Um, and I checked in with our counselors, and we look to be on good target for that. So, things at the high school, we do, the high school always is a little bit different, they have a little bit different things, so they do their sleds data, their apprenticeship programs, they're making partners with build, with business and industry, but I also have to say, like, Indy does really well with their business partners. So if you did take a look at their newsletter, they just had a couple of their business partners come in with reality and the veterinarian, and they also align that to our literacy block. And so we have more than just the high school, um, playing into this. So those college and career readiness, all of the new standards coming out have college and career readiness embedded in them. So that's something that the state is also doing to help us. I'll say that again, that is something the state is also doing to help us. So, um, we use the Minnesota Career Information System, and we are having conversations about bringing that back to the middle school. We had had that at the middle school at one time, and then when the programming went up to the high school, that what that also went up to the high school. We're looking at how we can do more of an exploratory down at the middle school and bridge that at the middle school as well. Our collaboration among our schools, we've gotten very good at looking at that E to twenty-two scope, um, and just creating those pathways. The last one is the graduation, and remember, I said this is kind of weird because it's old data, well, graduation is even older data, because of all of those four, five, six, seven year graduation points, this data comes out really late. So this is actually twenty twenty-three goal data, which is, you know, sometimes I still make mistakes when I'm typing this. So our goal, um, is from state statute, ninety percent of our students to graduate eighty-five, with no student group under eighty-five. So we made the ninety percent, but our students receiving special ed, which we are questioning, is that part of it or not? Because they took it out of the the gap one, but I don't believe it's taken out of this one yet, which is kind of weird, because those kids maybe graduated in five, six or seven years, but it's still included in the four-year data. And so, um, so, yeah, so we're 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 questioning about that, so I'm I'm putting goal not achieved on that one. But I did put, two of the three were achieved, I think is how I submitted, because I already submitted this. And so then, um, our goal is still, because this is what the state says, and I do still have special ed on there again, not sure if you'll see it, so we'll get more clarification. We have talked a lot about graduation strategies, and even though this is a high school looking goal, it's really a birth to twenty-two goal, because we all contribute to getting the kids here. So we've had a lot of discussion at the administration table, at our staff meeting tables, and at our committee tables, about what we play into this. This is the new one that they have added, all students are prepared for lifelong learning. It's kind of a big overarching thing, so, um, our administrative team met with their teachers and then brought it back, and we came up with this list, and I submitted it to MDE because they hadn't come out with that November guidance, and they just went, wow, Big Lake. And they just went, wow, Big Lake, you went above and beyond. This is more than we expected. And so we're calling this a really good list of things that we do to help kids focus on lifelong learning. So, and that is the Cacer, we're calling it now, the Cacer report. Any questions?
Just to clarify, is the personalized learning plan, is that a state goal or is that what Big Lake's chosen to?
It is a state program that you can get it. Yep, it's a state program, but that is one of the goal areas we can choose. So we choose that one. I think Big Lake was one of the first districts to adopt that, if I'm correct. I believe we were one of the trailblazers, as we usually are. So, yeah.
Any questions for Minda? Thank you, Minda. Announce and set the joint powers meeting.
Madam Chair, members of the board, it is that time of year, once again, where we get together with the city, the county, townships, and us. Am I missing any other groups?
Has anyone signed up for MSBA?
Yep. Yeah, I think so. Yeah. So it's the same, it's right during the MSBA. It's the Thursday night.
I think it was last year.
Maybe, I'm not sure. But it is Thursday, January 16th at 6:00 PM. Typically, I ask for a couple of board members to come. So I'm wondering if there are some that could come. Not you, Tony.
Well, you can come. You can sit out in the audience.
Of course, you're welcome to come. You're just not on the board then.
You'll have to sit in the back area.
Because I think, are you two going to MSBA?
Yeah, I've got to register yet, but yes.
Do you just want to just, right there?
We could do that. Be carpool.
So if that's okay, can Ashley and Tanya represent?
One of Wright Tech's board members are going to be, she retired this year. Stephanie O'Malley School Board, but she's going to be recognized there. So we'll have to see if he recognizes her.
What school district?
Buffalo.
I can picture her.
I know. It's just slipping my mind. I don't know why. I'm tired. Sorry.
Well, I think unfortunately, that recognition dinner will probably be when we are on our way back to go to this. That's the only thing that, because it's usually at 5:00, if I'm not mistaken. So, okay. So I think, I think if we could just, we need to take action on that. So I guess it would be appropriate to, for someone to make a motion to approve that date and time.
I will make a motion to approve the joint powers meeting on January 16th at 6:00.
6 o'clock, yes.
At Big Lake City Council Chambers. Okay. Motion made by Chabillion. Second by Brown. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Establish combined polling places resolution.
Madam Chair, can I speak to this one? All right. So this is an annual approval that in the event that we do choose to hold an additional election on a non-state election year, this allows us the opportunity to combine the polling places to save an expense. But we have to establish this. And as of right now, this resolution calls for Seron Lutheran to be our combined polling place. I think historically, I'd been at the city chambers, maybe. I think in '21, I've only been here since then, but that was where it used to be.
Don't we usually do this at organizational? I don't know.
I don't think we do it organizational. I think we just do it in December. Yeah. So, so, yeah. So no.
For some reason, I'm like, that sounds like an organizational thing. But if it has to be done by the end of the year, then that makes sense.
It's one that we approve every year because we don't know if we have to do a special election for a board member or if we choose to do an operating levy bond referendum, so on and so forth. But in order to do that, we would have to have that combined polling place, and this establishes that.
And we're just moving it from City Hall to Seron?
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Exactly. That's what the resolution says.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to combine the polling place to Seron Lutheran Church.
Okay, motion made by Chabillion, second by Scales. Any other discussion? Is this a roll call vote because it's a resolution? Okay. This will be a roll call vote. Scales?
Aye.
Chabillion?
Aye.
Sixberry?
Aye.
Reasoner, aye. Brown?
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, school board committee representative updates. Finance, we haven't had a meeting. Okay, no policy meeting? That's going very quickly through these. Building and grounds, have you had a meeting? No? Okay, any representation from other things?
Yeah. So we had a Schools Advocating for Fair Funding general meeting. So it was interesting. There were two, so Senator Corin spoke, and then Representative Yuakim spoke, in addition to our lobbyists. So this is a budget year at the Capitol. However, in the, to quote the lobbyist, buckle up. Down here to share. So not only is the, kind of, not 100% uncharted, but new waters in that the House is tied 67-67. So all of the committees are having co-chairs, and so they're sharing duties by parties. But also, the November budget forecast was even less than they had hoped it would be. So it's 1.1 billion less than the prior estimate. That was already going to be lower. So that leaves a $616 million projected balance for the end of '24, '25, '25, '26. However, the next biennium is looking at a $5.143 billion deficit. So kind of the bottom line on that is that even though it is a budget year, any new spending has to come from within. So there's going to have to be some advocacy happening to move funds rather than just have them come from a magical place called a surplus.
You're basically establishing new priorities.
Correct. Yes. So it's going to have to be a priority shift rather than, you know, just adding, adding things. So kind of, some kind of takeaways from that is you kind of had some of the expected partisan comments. However, I did want to just bring back to the board, I thought it was really interesting, and I really appreciate that Representative Yuakim is always willing to have conversations at meetings like this. I did send another email, just encouraging her. Also, check her emails. Because personally, I believe that if you sit on a statewide committee, you need to answer to the state and not just your representatives that are your constituents. And to date, I have never gotten a response from an email, even though I am speaking on behalf of the school board to the board or to the chair of the education committees. But we'll put that in its own little bucket. But during these meetings that she's been scheduled, she is very willing to have the conversation. And so I wanted to bring back to you guys that she really was under the impression that the unemployment insurance change only applied to people who did not have a continuing contract. She, it took quite a long time in the conversation for her to stop and realize. And then again, I have to give her credit because she did stop and say, I do need to look into that more because she truly did not seem to think it would be an issue for any district as long as we were bringing people back in the fall. She, it was like, right. It was such a, it was a huge conceptual change. Like there was, there was a completely conceptual disagreement.
Isn't she a career professional?
Yes, she is and has a master's in public. Yes. Yes. So I just wanted to bring back that one of the reasons I think it is still valid that we are part of Schools Advocating for Fair Funding is because opportunities like that, to get a member of an education committee, a legislative education committee in a room full of board members and superintendents, to have a, I mean, professional yet real conversation on, no, you don't understand. It is very much affecting our districts. And trying to break down that disconnect, I felt was a really, really important thing that happened last Friday. And I really do hope she takes that back and does actually look into that because it was really telling, the evolution of this meeting of her just not, just being steadfast. And no, no, it doesn't affect you unless, unless you're not renewing their contract. And then more and more districts brought back their examples. And in my follow-up email, I did provide actual data that you provided me, thank you, Angie, to her, to show what the example is in Big Lake specifically since the change. So anyway, so I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that that was a good meeting and that we had the ears of a couple of our state legislative representatives. And that perhaps a little education happened for that. So.
Can I add that Ashley, this is an interesting?
Yeah, it was very interesting.
So I got an email because they have an updated forecast for what will be available for '25, '26. The money's going to be almost gone.
Yeah, it's gone. Yeah.
And did, I mean, did she understand that?
Yeah, yep, she did. And so she, so she has been a, she actually has carried equalization bills a couple of different times. And I appreciate that about her because she is from, I wrote down, like Hopkins and Dyna, I think. And all of her constituents, all of her districts are capped. You know, I mean, they have as much as they want. And they're actually, she said during this meeting, they're pushing her to increase or get rid of the cap because they want to just keep passing, you know, operating refer. And she assured the group that she, even though it would benefit her districts, she is absolutely opposed to that because that would just increase the disparities for districts such as ours. And so I appreciate that she understands that. But some of this, some of these other things that were passed that did add quite a bit to our expenses, that she did not think were going to affect us, are affecting us. So, yeah.
And I think one of the conversations that is always just being, you know, obviously, good fiscal stewards of taxpayer dollars is when we are part of associations to understand the importance and make sure we're getting our value from that. And what Ashley was saying is that us having the ability to have the in the way that she was there is definitely a benefit of being part of. It's a benefit of being part of that group. Formerly C, now SAF.
Yeah. And I mean, you know, and I do, I do sit on their executive board.
She represents well. I've been to meetings. She represents well.
But, but I, you know, I constantly am trying to evaluate, you know, is this still a good use of our taxpayer dollars? Because if it's not, one less meeting for me is awesome. I'd be fine to get rid of it. Except, except that I did find that to be a very important reason that we are still a part of that. And I wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that I do think that that still is a very big value for districts such as ours, and really districts all across the state. Because if you are able to have that year right there and perhaps break down some of that understanding, I'm hoping that leads to some progress in the next session, especially since we're going to be talking about more reallocation rather than just additional, additional projects. So if she can have a better understanding of what that legislation did to our bottom line, perhaps there can be some reprioritization within that.
Well, and we're not even in worst case scenario. I mean, there are definitely school districts that are much worse off than us.
Absolutely.
Oh, with the unemployment, because they're saying the money is going to be, I mean, they initially thought they had enough money for three years.
Yep.
And so, like, I have to adjust our forecast because I would, now I'm banking on no revenue. That's a $300,000 debt.
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
Well, didn't it make, didn't it make it harder for staffing for summer too? Did you see it?
Because they could get money.
I know people that said they were just staying home.
Oh, I do too. Yep.
I don't know that everyone knew enough about it yet last summer. I am nervous about this summer.
Yeah, because I know a couple of people, well, they called and asked how it worked. I shouldn't have told them.
Well, and it's.
But I mean, I mean, honestly, they were like, well, I'm just going to stay home and collect unemployment. That'll take the summer off. Well, for a lot of people, why wouldn't you? I mean, the difference wasn't huge in what they would make, but that makes staffing harder in the summer too for us. And that's important. Summer school is very needed by some students.
Absolutely.
The other part of it is that we were told to document all offers of unemployment. And even though we documented it and were disputed, they still paid.
Yeah.
So.
And that's interesting. That was, that was a good example put forth by one of the superintendents in the audience as well to Representative Yuakim is, you know, you know, say I have 10 positions and 30 employees. I offer it the first 10 and they refuse, and the second, you know, 10, take it. And then the third 10, just get unemployment for not working. You know, it's like, he's like, how am I supposed to do that as a, as a, as a good, you know, as a good, you know, how am I supposed to maintain employee relations when I'm picking the ones that get asked, you know, basically, you know?
Well, even the first time that refused, still get the unemployment. So it's not, so.
Yeah, just like I said, it was, it was, I just wanted, I, I, I just wanted to bring back to the board that I feel like that meeting was particularly beneficial because session hasn't started yet. So it was a lot more relaxed in pace. They weren't rushing out to get to their next meeting. And so I don't think she thought it was going to be quite as, not controversial. But I don't think she thought it was going to be as much coming back at her as there actually was. But on the flip side, I think that was a really good opportunity for her to possibly expand her knowledge of how it's actually working and hopefully take that back to her committee assignments.
That's actually kind of scary.
It was, actually, yes. All of a sudden, I'm like, you don't get it. You don't get it. And all of a sudden, she's like, I might be misunderstanding how this works. I thought it was going to work this way. Everyone in the room was kind of like.
That's the problem.
Anyway, so thank you. I just like.
Thank you for attending.
Yeah, thank you for attending.
Oh, yeah. Wright Tech is just continuing to move forward with, and I forgot my notes. So the company that the superintendents decided, kind of brought to the board and recommended, which?
Ray and Associates.
Ray and Associates. And I think part of it was just availability, well, you know the reasons, but availability.
Comprehensiveness.
Yeah, the comprehensiveness. And then, I mean, really, too, like, we really have a plan set up in a certain way. We wanted to follow that. We weren't sure that that would happen with MDE. But with Ray and Associates, we really felt confident that that would happen as far as candidate pool and so forth. And so we went with them. It was a really, I mean, they were pretty equitable in price, both of them.
Yeah, they were right. I think they were kind of right in the middle. And I think, I was, I was actually part of the task force, I guess, to review the consultants that brought forward proposals. And this one rose to the top.
They were like on the ball too.
Oh, absolutely. And I think, so we've got another follow-up meeting here, I think, next, the week after the new year. So I'll be meeting, just to kind of follow up on, get updates on things. So we're moving forward with the replacement of Brian. As sad as that is.
Yep.
We're gonna, we have to fill that. So I'm confident that we'll find some good candidates. And we'll have some, I think the timeline, February is to interview.
That's what our hope is, yeah. And I think the whole meeting really was a focus on that and answering questions. We have some board members that weren't sure. Half of our board is changing at Wright Tech, so that makes it a little bit more difficult. But we'll get through. We have some, a couple coming on that were experienced, I would say, subs. And so that now they're coming on, so that'll be good. And they'll be involved with that part of it too. But Brian, he's been great. I mean, his ability to work through Wright Tech's, you know, strengths and weaknesses has been amazing. And it's going to be hard to find somebody to fill those shoes. But because it is such a unique facility, you know, unique, ugh, unique facility and then the way it's ran, it is a little different. So there was some talk around, you know, do we open and expand beyond just superintendents? Like, should we look at people that are, maybe don't hold that license yet? We decided as a board, no, we really want to stick to our guns and stay with that. We feel like the level of experience a superintendent brings is really important. And if we don't get a good candidate pool, then we'll take that next step to look at it. But we really need to hold to high level, you know, a high level of expectation because Wright Tech services all our schools, and we want to have a high level of education there. And so that is our hope, that we can really bring in a good candidate pool. And if for some reason that doesn't happen, then we'll expand. But we know, we know. We've been through it a few times now. So we know that sometimes getting, you know, a big pool of candidates is difficult. But sometimes you don't need a big pool. You just need the right candidate. So we're going to wait and see what happens there.
Yeah, I think, I think what's unique about Wright Tech is that you are dealing with eight different districts, eight, right?
Yeah, it's eight.
Eight different districts, and you have to understand that each of those districts have different financial situations and different opinions and different philosophies. And trying to, I mean, we have, we have one district and as a board, it's challenging, but sometimes. But this board is great. But I'm saying at that table, it's to pull that all together takes a really unique leader. And I think Brian's done a nice job of navigating that. And I think it's a unique position, but like I said, I'm confident. The Ray and Associates was impressive.
Yeah.
And I think if anybody can do it, they can. So in terms of bringing us some candidates, so I'm optimistic.
They have an impressive group. They have an impressive group because, I mean, they have people that, that worked in the field, right? And they can reach out to, to candidates they feel might be, yeah, really use their network base and I think that's what I liked about, I mean, MSBA, you know, they bring that too, but, um, I mean, really local, you know, localized, like, they're close. So I think that, I think that's gonna be great and, um, the budget too, that's another thing. We're really gonna look for somebody that has some experience in finance because the budget, even though we have, you know, um, school finance person there, it's just, it's still, uh, it's very fu, it's funded differently than our r, school districts, so. Um, that's all s, stuff that we have to take into consideration while we're hiring and we will, so, we have a good group.
Right down the path of, of doing that, so I know we'll have more updates coming up here, so.
Yep, for sure.
Any other reports? And our student representative isn't here, so.
She is in North Branch at a dance thing.
Oh, okay. And then, uh, do we, you wanna go after the superintendent's report, is that your deal?
No, I could go first. You want me to go first? I'll go first.
You can go first.
Hey, so, you know, I was, I was thinking about this and so I gave a speech at the Horn Hall of Fame and part of my conversation was kind of reflecting on my time as a board member. And I wanted, I wanted you guys to hear this because it, it was, uh, it meant a lot to me and I think it, it might mean a lot to you, knowing my background and kind of the pivot that I believe I've made over the last twelve years, right? So, as I sat down for today and at the Horn Hall of Fame, you know, I was kind of trying to think of a word to describe that event and it was the word legacy. And, uh, so I started looking up legacy and Billy Graham said it this way, "The greatest legacy one can pass on to one's children and grandchildren is not money, but rather a legacy of character and faith." Twelve years ago, I embarked on a journey, um, by becoming a Big Lake School Board Member. A journey that now, um, sorry, I'm a little emotional about this, I apologize. Uh, in, in my final year, in my final meeting, fills me with deep reflection and gratitude. When I first stepped into this role, I came into it with two objectives. Objective one was to support our students by creating as many opportunities as possible, fostering a robust and well-rounded educational experience. Number two was at the time, our district was in very financial straits, as Amber, you know.
Oh, yeah.
So the number two was to help rebuild the financial stability of the district and communicate confidence in our plans going forward. At the outset, I was convinced that achieving that second goal of restoring financial stability, uh, would be the most rewarding part of my tenure. I believe that balancing budgets and securing the district's future would stand as, uh, my greatest accomplishment. However, as the years unfolded, I came to realize how mistaken I was. It's not that I'm any less proud of the significance drives we've made in stabilizing our finances, rather, I hadn't yet understood the profound impact of nurturing our students' development and how integral it is to weave the very fabric of our community. Over these years, I've had the privilege of witnessing firsthand the incredible growth of our students, not just academically or athletically, but in the ways that transcend test scores and trophies. We as a board often focus on metrics, grades, athletic victories and accolades in the arts. While these achievements are certainly commendable, uh, the true measure of our success lies in intangible qualities that can't be immediately quantified. It's in the character of people that we build, the resiliency that they develop, the passion they discover and the leadership qualities that begin to surface in our students. I now understand that the most rewarding aspect of my service has been contributing to this positive development. It's been about playing a part and shaping individuals who will go on to make meaningful contributions to our community and beyond. These are achievements that take years to fully manifest, but they are ones that truly matter, the ones that define our legacy. Just as a supernova explodes in a brilliant light show that takes years to reach us on earth, the impact of our actions today will illuminate the lives of others far into the future. We are fortunate enough to look back like seeing that distant starlight and understand how the legacies of those before us shape what lies ahead. I mean this with all sincerity, that, um, I wanna thank everyone at Big Lake Schools, I've learned so much from all of you. A couple of things that I wanna point out. Um, Kim? Thank you so much for keeping us organized. This is a lot harder than I thought it was gonna be. Uh, Angie, I know you appreciate this as much as I do, but I really appreciated our six-thirty M finance meetings. I appreciate the late evening strategy discussions. I appreciate the opportunity to negotiate contracts with our employees. I appreciate the honor of delivering two commencement addresses and personally handing the diplomas to both my children. I appreciated being able to contribute to our revised referendum model that Angie spoke about today. I appreciate being part of building our educational infrastructure. I appreciate being part of creating opportunities across the three A's, the academics, athletics and arts. I appreciate part of, of hiring our superintendent, I'm really proud that you're here. I appreciate working with the board, the superintendent, the staff and everybody at Big Lake Schools. I appreciate the passion you all bring to, um, the center of our community, our beloved district. Um, I wish you all a merry Christmas and a happy new year.
Thank you, Tony.
And you may remember, we're all a phone call away.
Like I said, you can always have my minute.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is and you are a part of the community.
It's hard exiting something that you've put your passion into, absolutely. You know, and, you know, Derek, like, you're very quiet, but when you have something to say, I think you've come a long way in the way that you communicate to, about our district. And that letter that, that Tanya read last time was really well done. Really good job with that. And Lynette, when you speak, it's full of passion. I can hear the grammar in you. It's awesome.
Nobody listens.
It's a grandma.
And Tanya, I appreciate your leadership, everything you've done, I think you've done a great job being a board chair.
Thank you.
Uh, just, you've kept us grounded, we've had different differences in opinion and that's great and somehow behind the scenes, you're like the elf in the middle of night, just kinda making your way, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Right, uh, it's interesting, I'm gonna get to Amber last, um.
You guys have had the longest.
Yeah.
Type.
Um, but you know, with, it's interesting when I think of this, the nice lady to the left of me.
Oh, jeez.
I, I was talking to my wife today and I see a lot of me in you from when I started on the board. I have this huge growth curve and I think that you've done a phenomenal job of getting involved in all of the stuff that's going on in the district and digging into it, trying to understand it, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Now, respect to Amber, uh, we have known each other the most on this board and I'll be very honest that when we first started, she got elected two years after I did. And at first, I wasn't so sure. There was, there was this, this weird tension between the two of us and I think it was kind of identified where, you know, her kids were in, uh, association outside of Big Lake Schools and it kind of created this tension between Amber and I, like, why aren't you in the school sports, like, what's going on? I remember us sitting about and talking, remember that, we had coffee and chatted about it and, um, but what I've come to realize is that, and what I appreciate about you is that you are a very strong advocate for our district. Way stronger than I originally gave you credit for, so I really appreciate everything you bring to our district.
Thank you.
And thank you for running again and I did vote for you.
I'm, I feel like I'm gonna miss you being on the board and, um, for me, you leaving, you know, is a huge loss because we can be a sounding board for each other, we've been through it all, so like, if I, if I re, you know, if I recall something, it, you know, sometimes you'll correct me and sometimes you'll agree with me. Um, but I, I do appreciate the times that you correct me, you know, if I've remembered something incorrectly or in my own favor, wha, you know, whatever. But, I mean, I just think that's good that, that, you know, you and I, we can have an honest conversation. We might leave the board table frustrated, but we can call each other after and have that conversation and say, does this make sense and how does it make sense and, and find that middle ground. Um, and I've always appreciated that about you, so I, I will miss you being on this board, so thank you for being, you know, a level head and, level-headed and even if it wasn't when you left the room eventually through conversation. Same with me though, I mean, like, we get, we have passion for certain things and they drive us and, I mean, I think that's what makes this board strong is that if you look at all of us, we're all very much individuals and we all have passions for very different things and luckily, that is why our board has balanced up so well and so hopefully, that balance continues with the change. Um, but you will greatly be missed and as I said, I will always give you my mint if you show up at a meeting.
Very good, I did wanna, you know, le, leave a little comment for Tim as well. That, you know, I remember interviewing, you were part of this interview team and I remember when Tim spoke, there was just so much passion vigor in your voice, like, it was obvious from the beginning that this was the right guy. So, you know, just everything you do, I love the fact that you bring this, uh, humor to the board, I think. Uh, you can take shots at yourself and be okay with it and I think that's great, right?
That's true, yeah.
Right, so I think that's good, adding a little levity to it. Um, but I, what I wanted you guys to hear out of this, that I was trying to get out of this discussion, is that I came in very analytical. I came in very.
You did, you, I remember that about you, yes.
Very data-driven, very, very, the numbers said the story. And through this process, like I said, I've realized that there's other things that are untangible, unmeasurable that, that we contribute to society and I think that's, uh, something that we should all reflect on a little bit.
It really did, I mean, like, and that's where the whole graph thing comes from, right? Because for you, you wanted, like, you wanted to see numbers and everything and it was, you know, we want these graphs, which, and which is totally fine, it was nice because for the community too, like, you can look at a graph and you can understand it quickly. Um, but that had really like, I seriously, I mean, changed over time. And so, I mean, I really do see that change in you and that growth in you. But also to, to, I mean, the fact that you talk about school finance and how you wanted to come in to make that change, you did help make a change, like, I think the whole board, the whole school district helped make a change. We are in a much better place today as you finished your last day on school board here with us, but than we were when you started and every person that's been here along the way, including you, has helped to make that happen. And our staff in the school district as well and so you've gotta take credit where you can. I mean, obviously, we just heard from Ashley and we've heard from, from Angie tonight about how things were, you know, at state and federal level, we don't have control of everything, but we have been a very conservative board and we worked through that together with level heads and ma, and, and we are in a better place because of it, so give yourself credit where credit's due.
For the analytical stuff too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good.
Well, thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, enjoy your Thursday nights.
And now you have to follow that.
All right, Tony.
Short, strong.
All right, I gotta change what I was gonna say about it.
Rewrite.
Rewrite. But I'm sure, is that okay if I jump into my report?
Yes, you can jump into your part.
All right, a couple of things, I just want to remind everybody about January sixth, that is our organizational meeting as well as, uh, work session, uh, I've got a lot of things, I've been trying to keep it on our weekly updates to you, what we're kind of talking about. Uh, we've got a lot of things on the work session, so have not had a chance in-depth to talk to Tanya about like how that's gonna organizational meeting-wise go, but I'm assuming if you wanna switch any committees or wanna communicate anything, please reach out to Tanya and, uh, start that conversation and that'll, that's how that all sets forward, so, um, don't really have any department updates because, uh, we was kind of department-heavy with some of the presentations this evening. Uh, but I did want to acknowledge from around the district, because it is my favorite part. Um, I did wanna say thank you to the music department because once again, we had some great concerts and I know they do a great job with our students and I was able to attend, uh, a few of those, not all, but, uh, a few and, uh, they sounded great, so very much appreciated. And also, I would be remiss if I didn't have a few comments for Tony and I just wanted to say, uh, thank you because here's what I noticed about Tony is that driven by purpose and you can tell he's on a mission um, and there's an intensity behind it, so those purpose and intensity. But the other piece too, that I've learned to really appreciate him is, um, he's fun. And, uh, um, uh, the smile is nice and it provides a levity and it obviously connects with me too because I like that once in a while too, but yet you also know when it's time to be intense and be focused and purposeful. So, I appreciate it, you're, you're one, one heck of a, uh, board member and I appreciate it and we'll be, we'll miss you. So, uh, um, but we'll call you if we need some points on anything or maybe historical perspective, so.
Or if there's a lake to jump in.
Oh, if there's a lake to jump in.
Oh, yeah, you guys.
That's right, us three, us three are connected in coldness.
I watched, I was standing bundled up, I watched.
I, we fully submerged though, there's only one person that didn't.
I didn't plan ahead, I was like, oh, that was good.
I fully had involved into that lake.
I'm all yours, Tim.
Oh, it was cold, it was cold.
In all honesty, there's several of us that did fully submerge, so.
Oh, that was a good time.
I stayed dry.
That's a good, that's a good memory. Ho, hopefully, maybe, you never know, maybe that'll be in the future, I'm not kidding, I'm just saying. So, so we'll see, we'll see, that was a gr, that was a great event. So, all right, on to some calendar pieces here, just a couple of things, obviously a winter break coming up here. Uh, January sixth, organizational meeting and work session. Uh, MSBA conference, so far, Tanya and Ashley and Chelsea will be attending and I know Chelsea's gonna go through some of the phase trainings, uh, with me as I do with new board members and, uh, hopefully I don't get sick this time. That would be great.
Cause it has the last couple of years.
It's about that time, it's like COVID season for this guy. Uh, so, so, but I'm hoping, uh, to go through those trainings with Chelsea and we should be good to go. We'll be back in time for that joint powers on the sixteenth of January. And then also just wanna remind people that on the twentieth and twenty-first, there is no school. Uh, it's MLK Day as well as PD Day and then, uh, on the twenty-first, um, SEIU mediation. Uh, I'm assuming that you would stay as part of the, uh, negotiating team. Uh, so we do have mediation on that day on the twenty-first and then, uh, tentatively, I know on January twenty-second, there is some conversation about moving board meetings to Wednesdays. Um, so we'll determine that officially, but tentatively on January twenty-second would be our regular board meeting, tentatively. So, we'll see until organizational meeting, um, and what kind of go from there. So, I, also, this is the time of year, uh, our winter activities are really ramping up, so if you are ever looking for something to do, there's pretty much not a night where there's not something happening here. So if you are bored, need something to do, come and check out a game, show, event, showing, whatever it is, because their kids are working really hard, students are working really hard and, uh, I know that the students and the coaches and the advisors really appreciate seeing us all there, so take that opportunity. Um, it's a lot of fun and it's warm usually inside, so, um, it's always a good time to, to check that out. So, that concludes my report, unless of course, there are questions.
Any questions for Tim? We need a motion to adjourn the meeting. By scales. I will second, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Aye.
This meeting is. No, it's still going, this meeting is adjourned.
Almost an hour exactly.